Go ahead, sorry about that.
Well, for record, my name is Mark Corret. And I am the city's planning consultant. So I've been asked to talk a little bit about the history of comprehensive planning and what the roles of the future land use map are and how they should be treated. So first of all, their long history going back to the mid-'70s for comprehensive planning in the state parks. That's really when it started. That was when there was the first department that every jurisdiction had a comprehensive plan. It was called the Environment Land Management Study Committee, what was called ANMS-1. And they came out with the requirement that every jurisdiction have a comprehensive plan. But those plans didn't have any teeth to them. It was an exercise that every community went through in order to map out their future growth, but there weren't any requirements in terms of being consistent with that. And it wasn't until 1985, it was ANMS-2 at a statewide level, and they came out with the 1985, eventually that resulted in the 1985 Forest Management Act. And that created basically a statewide, highly integrated planning system that had significant rules for state and regional level planners and also brought in this idea of consistency with the comprehensive plan. Also had comprehensive requirements in regards to the timing of infrastructure and the timing presence of development. And it established certain required elements to the comprehensive plan. There's been some tinkering with that over time, but essentially the required elements that are in the plans are future land use element, traffic circulation element, housing element, facilities element, conservation element, recreation element, capital improvement element, and a public schools element. All of this comprehensive planning part is focused on the physical aspects of development. There's lots of social aspects that people can bring in their plans at an optional level, but it's not dealing with, you know, in these days, things like health or... Its focus is on the physical growth and development of communities.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States of America. See, that's why we should have multiple meetings a month. So we just, yeah. Go ahead. Sorry about that.
Well, for record, my name is Mark Correct. And I am the city's planning consultant. So I'm I've been asked to talk a little bit about the history of comprehensive planning and what the roles of the the future land use map are and how they should be treated. So first of all, their long history going back to the nineteen to mid seventies for comprehensive planning and state parks. That's really when it started. That was when there was the first department that every jurisdiction had a comprehensive plan. It was called the Environmental Land Management Study Committee, what was called A M S one. And they came out with a requirement that every jurisdiction would have a comprehensive plan. But that those plans didn't have any teeth to them. It was an exercise that every community went through in order to map out their 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 future growth. But there weren't any requirements in terms of the consistency. And it wasn't until nineteen eighty five, it was A M S two, at a statewide level, and they came out with the nineteen eighty five. Eventually, that resulted in the nineteen eighty five Project Management Act. And that created a basically a statewide, highly integrated planning system that had role had significant roles for state and regional level planners. And also brought in this idea of consistency with the comprehensive plan. Also had comprehensive requirements in regards to the timing of infrastructure and the the timing presence of development. And it established certain required elements to comprehensive plan. There's been some tinkering with that over time, but essentially the required elements that you that are in plans are future land use element, traffic circulation element, housing element, called facilities element, conservation element, recreation element, capital improvement element, and a public schools element. All of this comprehensive planning part is focused on on the physical aspects of development. But there's there's lots of social aspects that people can bring in their plans at an optional level, but it's not dealing with, you know, in these days, things like health or it's it's focuses on the physical growth and development of communities. As I said, the the scheme that was created in nineteen eighty five, essentially, it was unchanged for about twenty five years till back to two thousand nine, two thousand eleven. And at that time, the state significantly pared back the role of state and regional plan planners in terms of reviewing almost all aspects of comprehensive plans amendments. So today, what the state reviews are large scale amendments. It's gone through some changes, but fifty acres or more goes to the state review. And those changes that are associated with the evaluation and appraisal reporting process. That process has changed a little bit over the years. But starting in that nineteen eighty five Declaration Act, it was requirement for every city to review the plans every seventy years. There were some very stringent requirements for how that was to be done and and the documentation that was to go back to state. That's changed somewhat, but but overall, that process is in place and that's what we're going through right now. And that is what Robert and Mark are gonna talk about about this thing once I get done talking. But one thing that the change to two thousand nine, two thousand eleven didn't change are the consistency requirements. So so I want to talk about this, particularly since it was brought up in the introduction. And this requirement I'm gonna actually drill down into statute. So let's first talk about the legal status of comprehensive plans. Once a jurisdiction's comprehensive plan has been properly adopted, all developments, both public and private, must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. I'm gonna read directly from for statute. If you like, I can provide you specific citations, but the purposes of, okay. One six three point three one nine four one A. After a comprehensive plan or element or portion of thereof has been adopted in conformity with this act, all development undertaken by and all actions taken in regard to development orders by governmental agencies in regards to land covered by such plan or element shall be consistent with such plan or element as adopted. Similarly, all the jurisdiction's land development regulations must be consistent with the plan. So this is one six three point three one nine four one B. All land development regulations enacted or amended shall be consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan or element or portion thereof. And any land and all regulations existing at the time of adoption, which are not consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan or element or portion thereof, shall be amended so as to be consistent. If a local government allows an existing land development regulation which is inconsistent with the most recently adopted comprehensive plan or element or portion thereof, remains in effect, local government shall adopt local government shall adopt a schedule for bringing the land and all regulations into conforming provisions of the most recently adopted comprehensive plan or element or portion thereof. And the land development regulations are inconsistent. Provisions of the most recently adopted comprehensive plan or element or portion thereof shall govern any action taken in regards to adoption or redevelopment. So and this is a quote from Pine Press, late eight versus Shidell. This is a two thousand and one of the fourth D C X. So this was consistency was challenged in court. And the 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 statute is framed as a rule, a command to cities and counties that they must comply with their own comprehensive plan. The statute does not say that local government shall have some discretion as to whether a proposed development shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Consistency with a comprehensive plan is therefore not a discretionary matter. And so and there's a definition of what is meant to be consistent. This is one sixty three point three one nine four three A. The development order or land development regulation shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan. If the land uses density or intensities and other aspects of the development permitted by such order or regulation are compatible with and further the objectives, policies, and land uses, and density or intensity in the comprehensive plan, and if it meets all the other criteria enumerated by local government. So breaking that definition down. First, it is the aspects of the development that are at issue. Land uses, densities, intensities are specifically called out and therefore are probably the the most important aspects in terms of that. So this is the same thing. B. Development order approved or undertaken by a local government shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan if the land uses densities and intensities, capacity or size, and timing and other aspects of the development are compatible with and further the objectives and policies, land uses, densities, or intensities in the comprehensive plan, and if it meets all the other criteria. And now I'm reading from one six three point three one nine four four A. A court in reviewing a local government action or development regulation under this act may consider nine other things, the reasonableness of the comprehensive plan or elements or elements thereof relating to the issue justifiedly raised or to the purpose and completeness of the comprehensive plan or element or elements thereof in relation to the government action or development regulations under consideration. According to me, so the relationship of the comprehensive plan or other elements or elements thereof to the governmental action taken or the development regulation involved in litigation, the property shall not be taken without due process and payment compensation. So
Mark, I think that maybe if we could put this in in just general terms, I think I think that would be most helpful because what we have here, my understanding, I guess, is that we have a confusion between what a future land use map is and what our current zoning map does. And and there's a lot of confusion there. And so maybe just some of this more in general terms.
Yeah, I I just wanted to be clear because I wasn't intending to
Oh, I know.
to do all this quoting except for.
I mean, couldn't we just put in a simple Florida statute, which basically says that comprehensive plan should provide the principles, guidelines, standards, and strategies for the orderly and balanced future of economic, social, physical, environmental, and physical development of the area that reflects community commitments to implement the plan and its elements. Pretty simple. That's what it's about.
Yeah, that's sort of the big picture. That is what it's about. But
I know. You were trying to give us the details.
I was trying to help because there's a question about with the privacy. You you don't have discretion in regards to whether you follow this in your comprehensive plan.
Okay, Mayor, what's right about that? Right there. You got the crossbar. Okay, Mark. So, because I'm being told two different things by two different experts.
Did you tell him to turn my phone a little bit?
Does my mic on?
Yes.
Okay, is that that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. So when you're talking about we must comply with our comprehensive plan, is the future land use map a part of the comprehensive plan with which we must comply?
Yes, it's a required element in the future.
Okay.
Wait, so letting this?
That's fine. He said yes. Okay, next part. So what does that mean for zoning? Is it optional for zoning to comply with the future land use map?
Yeah.
So in other words, for example, my property is currently zoned residential one. If the future land use map, the future land use map designates my property for a more intense level of development, and I want to rezon, sell my property, and the new owner wants to have it rezoned to that more intense level of development, say, medium density. Is or am I or the future buyer, are they entitled to that higher level of density as shown in the future land use map?
No, not automatically, because your your zoning is, while it may yield a lower density, is is not immediately inconsistent with that.
Now, saying that if we wish to.
If you wish to, you certainly have the right to ask for it. The the very first thing I would say as a planner, you know, when somebody wants to quote unquote about zoning the property is check for consistency in compliance. So if they wanted to do something that was yielding a higher density than was allowed by future land use map.
That's what I'm saying. Just my property.
So that's what I'm saying.
Okay, everybody, everybody, wait a second. Okay. Well, no, well, no, we're not gonna let this happen. Okay, we're gonna have but we're gonna have some civil conversation here. Nobody's nobody's attacking anybody. Nobody's doing anything to anybody here. So I just want to make sure that let's have some conversation and talk this through.
And I'm getting to the heart of it because the reason I'm stopping is he didn't answer exactly what I have.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm getting.
Okay.
I'm a planner. I have to talk. I'm sorry.
That's true. I know. That's true.
So if a person came in and asked for something that was a lot higher density than than I'm looking at the future language map, then the answer right there is no. You know, we wouldn't even be talking about it, you know, unless they wanted to amend the future language map.
Right.
And the first thing I would explain to them is there are there's sort of two levels of
Mark, that's that's not the crux of the issue that we are trying to solve the question to. There are people here who are concerned because their properties in the future land use map are designated for significantly higher densities than the current zoning. So that's why I'm asking you. I I don't want like that overview of the whole rezoning thing. I'm saying when your future land use designation with the property that you previously sit on is a higher density, are you not entitled then to a rezoning at that higher density?
It it really has to be built into a plan.
No, no, your density, for example, is is in a range. So it 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 just it it depends upon the split example. You know, low density is zero to four units per acre. And median density, I think, is four to ten.
Okay.
Right? So you're not automatically entitled to the max density in there. So I was just trying to help. And when I'm trying to before sort of walk you through how I would deal with somebody who's, you know, asking to, you know.
How long, Margot, have we been working with this current future land use map?
The current, I may.
Yeah.
The the current future land use map, at least based upon is seems to be from twenty nineteen, that's the last before December, when there was some small scale amendments that went through. Twenty nineteen was when the last small scale ended, that seemed to confirm because on the future language map that is on your website, which is basically making consistency with in the comp plan is twenty nineteen. So this is your future land.
And those were those were small scales.
Those were, most of them.
Okay, so prior to that, when was, do you know when the last change was?
Probably twenty one, twenty, twenty ten, maybe twenty ten.
Okay. So what we have is, so what my understanding is, because all of us, and you can imagine, all of us have been spoken to by residents, and there is a lot of concern out there that certain neighborhoods are zoned multi-family. However, I mean, the the future land use shows them as multi-family, which is highest and best use. You have to have the infrastructure as you plan forward. However, on the zoning map, they show them as single family. So there is some concern amongst homeowners that apartments, multi-families could go up right around them. And so that's where I think we need some clarity. We need some clarification about what are the possibilities of something like that. Am I correct? Is that?
Yes.
That's exactly.
Okay, so that's the situation we're dealing with. After the last meeting, it brought to light that this future land use map showed some discrepancies that they didn't realize when they were buying their properties, that there, what could happen in the future. And of course, you know, I've always looked at a future land use map. It can be a moving document. It's a working document, but I also have always looked at it kind of like you look at retirement and planning for retirement. You plan to make sure you have everything in place for one day in the future. And so
Thank you. That sounds like a very nice way to ask you.
So I mean, that's just
You sound very, very nice, although you're playing.
Thank you. So if somebody could just help take care of these concerns and fears that our residents have, so and then we'll then we'll move forward.
So they don't necessarily have multi-family future land use map. They have is a is a higher density than their current underlying zoning allows. So so yes, somebody could ask for a zoning change. Now, there aren't currently any zones that yield density. Your straight zoning category don't yield any of the densities. So really, somebody's only option under that, they have two options. A, they they could ask and suggest the city that there be a certain zoning category that that be created, and they have to justify that, or they would come in for a planned deennovation. And then all of that would come through your planning zoning board and and go to you guys to. Yeah.
So so nothing is It's a guideline. A comprehensive plan is just nothing more than a guideline for future growth. You know, that you can discuss it to grow this day, but that doesn't mean I'm gonna come in and and do that. It's really up to zoning, equals decisions. And up to your permission and everything else. If this doesn't happen, because somebody wants.
And it's a very good public process. I think that's what, and and that's something else that the comp plan does provide for is that there has to be public input when something like that, there's an impact such as that that's going to happen. Is that correct?
That is, Mark.
Okay.
Okay, but, Mayor?
Yes.
This was still not clear to me, and I I hesitate for us as commissioners to be saying what the law is because that's not really our place.
I don't think any of us.
I think I'm suggesting that, but.
Well, hang on. I haven't, I haven't, my question, I haven't said what I was concerned about. There's conflicting information that I have. I had a long conversation with Margot, and it was my understanding that she told me, I may have this wrong, that the future land use map is the one part of the comprehensive plan that's pretty binding. And as well, anytime a rezoning comes up, this commission has been told and commissions all over the state of Florida, where I've listened to the meeting, are told that if someone has a designation for it in the future land use map, that by and large, a commissioner cannot deny a rezoning that's consistent with it.
So a couple of different things here. I have to
Yeah.
get into some some technical matters.
That's fine.
So comprehensive plans, the future language map, I I think you've already heard, you know, my quotations about consistency and kind of status of that future language map. So the the future language map is, it's important that it, you know, reflects the desires and directions that they do that. Couple different things. First of all, when you adopt a comprehensive plan, when you change your future language map, that is a legislative act by the governing body. Legislative acts are that though are completely discretionary. You can grant the future land use map change if you so desire or deny it, and that's purely legis legislative. Once you get down to the zoning level, okay, those decisions, kind of what you're referring to, they're quasi judicial. Right? So once it's quasi judicial, it doesn't mean you can't deny it. But you have to deny it based on competent substantial evidence. So you
Right. And that rarely, that rarely happens in the average rezoning.
Right, and that rarely, that rarely happens in the average rezoning. In the state of Florida, for a homeowner or something, I think, for that. Correct?
In terms of the, does it, you know, I, when I'm not representing cities, I also
Right.
work with developers.
Right.
And believe me, I, I've had more than a few turned down. So, so it, it, it happens that more often than than you would think.
I've not seen it here in front of cities. I've never seen one.
But that's, again, two things. A, you guys are decision makers. B, it really depends upon the information that's presented to you. I mean, that's, that's why you hire individuals, like your city manager, city attorney and myself, to scrutinize these things and, you know, make sure that, uh, the information that's needed for you guys to make decisions are, are brought to bear. But that, that first hurdle is, you know, are you, are you not consistent with the future language map? Once you get on that, it certainly can be denied that there has to be, that there has to be reasons. You know, one of them is compatibility. You know, what, there, there are all sorts of other zoning considerations that we'll look at, you know, beneath the level of, you know, is it, or is it not consistent with the densities that are in the comp plan?
But, but my concern is that I don't see how looking into the future, we can assure a homeowner whose property sits in a large swath of property, large swath, that is zoned for a more dense use than their neighborhood currently reflect. I mean, we don't have control over what will happen in the future and who might want to buy and develop that property. Wouldn't you say? I mean, how do we have the power to tell them, don't worry about it? If it's a higher density.
I mean, I don't, in my personal opinion, in any legal matter, I wouldn't guarantee, you can't guarantee anything for anybody in the future. I mean, there may be five new people sitting up here. So I don't think there's any, you can't give all one hundred percent. There's no way it would happen. They would have to go through all these procedures and plan out. It wouldn't just be overnight where somebody would throw up a condominium complex or this. They would still have to follow all of the notice requirements and all that stuff. And then we still have to come up with a commission for approval.
And we would have to determine that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We done had this conversation in the past. Okay. We done had that con, uh, this conversation in the past. Okay, do you know we're all, uh, right close in front of Wendy's? There was that pan thinking there?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken. Okay, we wanted to change that when, uh, I can't think of the city manager.
Tankers.
No, I wouldn't take of it, but, uh, have to take. Uh, but the permission themselves had a time, according to citizens, it won't that complex to be built right side that residential area. Is that what we, did we have none?
Yes. What's going on, what's going on around it?
They didn't want that right next to their property.
And so it didn't pass?
Yeah, it didn't pass.
So, so my question is, if I may.
Yeah, me go ahead.
Um, I, I think it, it sounds as though, um, let me, let me put my, my thought to this. I don't believe that you can have a comprehensive plan that is exactly the way things are today. I think a comprehensive plan has to allow some flex. It cannot be so tight that there's no flex to it. It's an idea. It's a, it's a possibility. It's a, something you can reach for if you want to grow the city. But it's not something that you can just do as you're just discussing overnight. There's a process to, like if somebody moves into their own, and now I want to put my condominiums up, they just can't do it a, as quickly as what people think. There's a whole big process that has to happen. And, but you can't, you can't not have a comprehensive plan that could, could bring in more possibilities of, and types of growth um, that, that are out there for Crescent City. And so I think when we start to look through this comprehensive plan and we start to talk about maybe some changes and things like that, I think the first thing that we need to do is get into compliance. And I believe that's why you're here today, is to make sure that we are being compliant. We can't do anything until we are in compliance. And, um, that's why I'm not really sure why we do the workshop right now, quite frankly, but, but I think that that, that's kind of what we have to, to do. And compliance are all those regulations that he so nicely started rattling through uh, all the different regulations or statutes and all the other different things where, um, we have to just make sure that our comprehensive plan su, you know, satisfies all of that. That's what I think I'm, I, what I was kind of reading the other day, you know, explaining in the zoning, uh, meeting. I don't know if that's kind of right, but that's not what I'd read.
We have to. We have no option. We, we, we have no option. Yes.
So right now, we have no option at all to change anything. Okay? There's nothing we can do until we are definitely in compliance and we both be in compliance. And then at that point, we can move ahead to change or do, I don't know, whatever we kind of want to do, I guess. Is that the way I understood that?
Yeah, yes, and it's important to note, there are no changes to the maps in here, other than cleaning up, uh, there were references to statute, but the colors, the, the categories of properties have not changed in what's in this compliance update. It's the same thing. And then in the future, if you want to look at the entire neighborhood, do we really want this whole neighborhood to be more dense in the future potentially or not? You can make those kinds of.
You can make those kinds of decisions. But what you do have to kind of have, you know, it's got to be a little bit in flux. I mean, um, you know, you have to be able to determine where there could be growth, what type of growth, um, and what type of growth we don't want. I mean, you know, but, but, you know, if you want a hospital, you know, you, you gotta have a place to put the hospital. Uh, right now, it could be in a multi-use area that they might want to put it in for whatever reason. And, you know, so it's just, it's, it's a, it's a guide. It's not, uh.
It's not cement.
Yes, it's not cement. Thank you.
And so really what we're doing right now is we're going through, we're doing our five to seven year evaluation of, correct? So it's called an year at the state level. They call it an year. So we have to do that. That's what we're doing. That's what we're doing right now. And so that's a process. And though, well, not right now, but this is a workshop so that we can work everything out so that we can, so we can talk about these things. We can get this all out in the open. Everybody can, you know, get a good understanding. Commissioner Navita, you had a comment?
Yeah, I have a question. Since we are first to be compliant and I understand why you raised the issues that came up at the complan meeting because we've all been contacted by people who were concerned and confused, but, um, I would just say I think it's time to move on to the presentation.
I was, thank you. I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll chair the meeting and do that. Thank you. So I think we're at that point now. And so are we gonna turn it over to Margo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Margo Warren, Board of Municipal Council. And I'm going to kind of talk about how we got here. Um, the, the idea that you guys have contact with the, with the council to do this work and just kind of give you the history of how that happened. And, um, because I, I guess I, I didn't do that type of public workshop that previously helped. Um, so it, basically, in our experience, um, complans are kind of living documents. They're expected to change. Um, and our experience in Martin's part is usually the jurisdictions review them regularly for compliance. The state requires it. Um, and then they update them to meet that, that the current vision for the area, both in the text and the future land use map. Um, so, so that's kind of like, it, it's okay that there would be things in there that you would want to change and, and you're able to change. So the history of like why we're here with Crescent City, um, is the state requires review of compliance to what's called the evaluation appraisal process. You guys at this point have it, have it down. Um, every seven years, the state sends a letter to start the process, the jurisdiction responds, and then has a year to make evaluation and appraisal based amendments. And those amendments are what we, we worked on for you. Um, regional council knew that some of the small jurisdictions in Putnam County had complans that were coming up for evaluation appraisal. Crescent Cities was due June one, twenty twenty one. Interlockings was due August one, twenty twenty one. And Wellaques was due on October one, twenty twenty one. Um, and we thought there might be economies of scale in doing them together. Um, so we, we pitched to, um, to Crescent City, Wellaques, Monopark and Interlockings to do the evaluation and appraisal review and related updates that would be needed for compliance. And to also do a public input survey and workshop to gather input on the public's thought about, thoughts about the future to assist the jurisdictions to determine whether changes to the comp plan beyond compliance would be needed. So we were hoping that that would, that would be a way to kind of decide whether additional, um, changes were beyond compliance.
So you're doing a two-fold. This is kind of a two-fold.
Well, we're, we're, what we were hoping was that this would be useful in determining, and we were dealing with, with possibly forward into that being free um, municipalities. Um, and their needs obviously were, were different. Um, but in, in at least a couple of, um, instances, we were hearing that there was talk about master planning or changing of the vision, um, of the, of cities. Um, and so we thought, well, we, we have to do this anyway. We have to do public input. Um, we can perhaps make it more meaningful than just talking about, you know, there are these legislative changes that the public aren't, doesn't care so much about. Um, but since we've got them there and since we have the ability to do an online survey, let's gather input about, um, what should change um, in, for example, the Crescent City and what should not. And I, and I think that's almost verbatim a question that we asked. Um, so you now can use that in making decisions as to whether there are other things in the comprehensive plan that you want to change. Um, and you can kind of do that, once you're in compliance, you can do that when you're ready to do it. So that's what we were looking for, is a little bit more than just the, um, compliance. Um, we've got, arguably, that's not the fun part or the more interesting part, but you gotta do it. Um, so we thought that the economies of scale and us doing it for you, um, we're, we're, we tend to be cheaper than a consultant for a government agency. Um, and we can do that sort of thing. Um, so we were trying to be helpful in that way. Um, so as I mentioned, Monopark declined, the other jurisdictions agreed. Um, so we then took that, that understanding, wrote it up into a, um, a grant application to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. Um, and it went for it. So we're funded to do this work. So it's not costing the city, um, to do this work. So that, that's always important. Um, and, you know, we're, we're hoping it would be, you know, for it to be just good things.
I'm gonna actually stop just a minute, Commissioner Navita.
Yeah, but my, and I'll speak to some of this later. I do have a concern because of my understanding, we never approved that contract to the commission. I think you or Charles sent me a copy of it. That contract never came before that commission. I noticed you're saying Monopark declined. Um, but in point of fact, we did agree to extend two thousand dollars and to agree to the schedule. Is that not correct? That we're supposed to.
No, it, it's not costing the city anything.
We can build them two thousand, up to two thousand dollars.
We can build them.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We never saw that contract.
It's, it's on your agenda for next week at your request.
But that's my point. We, we are in a process that, and I understand that you provide the service at a lesser cost, but we were never given an option to really accept the decline. And we did not approve that contract.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll address that if we can next Thursday at the meeting. But today, this is a workshop. Let's just get through this workshop. Can we get through that?
Sure.
Because we have to do this regardless. We have to do this.
I'm aware of that.
Let's get through this workshop. Okay, Margo, I apologize for the.
Oh, no worries. Um, so, so the, 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 um, the deliverables under the contract are pretty straightforward. Um, we'll be, um, sending the evaluation and appraisal review letters to the state. Um, you know, you, you guys have, um, a year to make the changes, um, which means that for compliance, the due date is whatever the date was of the letter, response letter, which is May twenty second or something. But, but it's, it's some, something like June first, because that's the, the state's date.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Twenty twenty six. So whatever.
For the amendments.
Okay.
For the compliance related amendments. Um, we have at this point, um, closed the survey, the online survey, um, and provided the, um, the kind of transcript of everything that we heard at the workshop that we had um, to talk about what people thought about what was, what was going on and what was needed. Um, so hopefully that's, that's helpful to deciding whether changes are needed, you know, larger, you know, other sorts of changes to the comp plan, you know, in between compliance reviews. Um, and we are at the stage where we have an underlying strike through version of the, um, the comprehensive plans um, and associated background data and analysis that's due in March. Um, and then in May, if, if, if you guys adopt, then we, we will provide those materials to the state as well. So that, that's kind of what's included in the contract and then reflected in, um, contract and objective for you guys.
Uh, Mayor, I couldn't hear that. What she said, something to do in March? I didn't hear what that was.
Yeah, that's the underlying strike. That's what you have now from us. So that's the underlying strike through version of changes related to compliance. Um, and the background data and analysis that explains what we're changing and why.
Where, where, where is the background data and how?
It's, it's provided. It's.
Where?
It's in your packet. You'll have it.
You mean next week?
Yes.
Okay, because I talked to Margo about that. I'm not really understanding why we wait till next week to get the background data and analysis.
So the background data analysis was the cover letter for the planning and zoning, um, memo for that agenda item. It is also the cover letter, cover memo for your agenda item for next week. So.
And that's what came from?
Came from, yes.
Me, right?
Yes.
But it.
It's an appendix to the plan, but I used it as the, the cover memo to explain the changes that we're covering with the document that you received.
Okay.
And Robert can certainly summarize those, those, those changes.
And that's a cover memo that's in this, that's in this packet, correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we have a cover memo in the packet.
But, but it's not, I look at that cover memo and it does not explain, that's not what I expect.
Okay, let's go, let's go move forward because we're, we're an hour into it now. So, and we haven't even.
Okay, so, so, um, in, in Interlockings and Crescent City, we're sort of in the same place. Um, and then we're, and it was slightly earlier place with, um, Wellaques. Um, but those, the, is resting in all the jurisdictions. Um, so the next, the next step, um, is the jurisdiction proceeds with the year-based amendments as proposed by the council, if you're going to do that. These would be transmitted, they use that word, the state uses it, reviewed by the state, amended to reflect state comments. And just heads up, we probably will get some because the state agencies take it very hard. We ask them in advance. Um, but often they miss them, um, until they are being asked formally, um, for comments. And so we make that some comments and we, we'll make your response to that. Um, we'll amend the, the changes, um, to the comp plan, um, and then post, it would be proposed for adoption, um, and provided to the state. When they're, when the state gets them, um, the comp plan is compliant for state purposes. Um, so after that, the jurisdiction can make changes of less than fifty acres to the future land use map locally, as Mark referred to, um, through small scale amendments. So that's something you control locally. You want it provided to the state, but they're, they don't get to say no to the local. Um, and then changes to the text of the plan and a map changes larger than fifty acres, maybe done through a process called expedited state review. So it's a slightly shorter process than, than what, um, amendments that have to do with compliance have to go through. Um, so you do have the ability to make additional changes. Um, if, if you don't proceed, then you're kind of, you can't change the comp plan until you're doing compliance. Um, so, you know, that's kind of the alternative. So that's, are, are there any questions on how we got here? I mean, we, we thought we were helping. Um, in, in compliance is, I, I do have to say, I've been doing this a long time, it is not the most interesting part of the comp plan. And so we thought if we did a larger discussion, even though we can't implement it necessarily, not, certainly not through this contract, but, um, at least it would give the city something to kind of look at as to what people are thinking about, um, the future of the, the city and see whether the comp plan matches with that or if some additional changes. So would you like Robert to take us through the proposed changes?
That'd be great. Do we have any more questions, Margo? I'm sorry, Margo, before she's done. Any more questions, Margo, commissioners?
No, I probably will have some.
Okay, well, thank you.
I have a question.
We'll have public comment at the at the very end.
Well, that's perfect, what he's getting ready to say.
Well, we'll have a public comment at the very end. Yes, sir.
Members of the commission. So with with the changes that we have made. Big sense, big sense requirements to the comprehensive plan. There's serious rules throughout the com plan, but the first one is we changed the timeframe of, the current timeframe, I believe, is twenty twenty. The the planning timeframe is updated at twenty thirty five. And the reason why we chose twenty thirty five is that is how far the, what's called the Euro of Economic and Business Research at the University of Florida's population projections for the city goes up to. In the regional water supply plan. And so that's the data that's publicly available, that is, that's free. If you want anything that is post that publishing of that water supply plan, it does cost, but to the up to twenty thirty five. Has been posed as the planning timeframe. So all of the the comprehensive plan name, as well as the map names, this way you see twenty thirty five on those maps. That's to reflect up through that planning, that demographic projection window. One of the statutory requirements that some of the changes that happened was reflected in future land use element policy eight point one point nine point two. Which states the city commission may approve the development of housing that is affordable. And there's a definition, there's a statutory definition of affordable that's within that text. And on any parcel and what in residential, commercial, or industrial, that's what is changing industrial inclusion and industrial land use and zoning categories. And this is pursuant to Florida statute that's changing. Another recent, more recent statutory change is under future land use element policy eight point one point nine point three. Parenthesis eight, parentheses four, which is in the agricultural land use category, definition of what is allowed in agricultural land use categories. Senate Bill eight ninety six, which was passed last year, requires that solar facilities. And there's a statutory definition of solar facilities. What Florida, what Florida state law says is solar facilities, more considerable facilities. Are permitted in use on the future on in agricultural use. There has also been, as the map series, one, we can talk about the particular land use map. The map series has been, and that's the whole colored maps you have in front of you, all those maps are required by statute to be included in the comprehensive plan. And so any data that is newer to like aquifer recharge areas, that's most of the most up to date data that we have from the state agencies that provide. Excluding the future land use map itself, but the the historic districts, soils. Anything that is a particular map that's based on state data that has been updated through most of most recent available data. We've also, in twenty seventeen, as I kind of mentioned with the Bieber data, the water supply facility work plan, the regional water supply facility work plan is updated. And so we have to reflect that within the city water supply plan. So we have proposed a water supply facilities work plan for the city. And that is also associated policies threatened that are required by statute and have been referred by the water management district have also been proposed. To the public facilities element. We've also added in Goal eight point one, which states that when a five year capital improvements plan is adopted. It will become an appendix to the capital improvement element and will be provided to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity or successor agency. So that way that as part of that com plan, it's amended, it's sent off to the state planning agency. Whether it's Florida Department of Economic Opportunity now or its successor agencies. One of the other major laws passed in the last legislative cycle. Was House Bill fifty nine, which required after June twenty ninth of last year, a private property rights element. And there are statutory texts that is required to be in the comprehensive plan. And so that is one of the proposed elements to meet that statutory requirement. There was other changes that were, not just reflecting statute, but of, you know, upon plan adoption. Some older texts upon plan adoption by whatever year, if that year was passed. Those have been, those have been struck through. As well as there was in the LKA meeting two weeks ago, that there was a text mentioning police department that had been struck through. And then we've also struck through on text associated with Junction Road, a project associated with Putnam County City Junction Road. The city that the LKA stated that that project, that road has been finished currently happening. So that's just to reflect what is current, because it is an older com plan, it's just to reflect what is currently available within.
Ready for questions? Robert, you ready for questions? Okay. You guess you are. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Just another comment. I didn't remember property rights before, so you say it's new.
It is it is new, yes. So property rights element as an element, there is. Yes, so. That is required, that's all new text, because there was no city private property rights element beforehand. So this is just one of those required elements by the new state or by state statutes with recent law that has to be in the comprehensive plan. They are, they will be reviewing any comprehensive plan going forward. They will be reviewing if that has, that has been included in the comprehensive plan. So this is to meet that recent.
I think before they were just assumed that these rights were personal, but now it's in right and.
There were policies in the future land use element that addressed, they were property rights. They were property, but this is alone, this is being within the state test. Yeah, because state now requires, you can, you know, that was probably the city decided had that, and this is now you are required, is all jurisdictions to have this in text.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Burton, do you have any questions? Commissioner Ben? Commissioner Navita?
Yes, I have a list of questions, and it would require you to have the plan in front of you, because they're pretty specific. Okay, question on pages eight and nine. Our com plan mentions twenty five foot buffers from the waterfront and. For construction and also twenty five foot vegetation buffer. My question is, does state law allow a greater buffer? Not that we will be changing it now, but while we're here. Is a greater buffer allowed?
I don't I don't think we know what the.
Yeah, I don't know the state law on that.
Okay, so we don't, okay, so question mark on setback. On page nine, policy A one four five, definition of wetlands. The definition of wetlands in the Florida Administrative Code is stricken out.
That's particular, that particular F A C rule is not current.
So my question is, is where would we find, what would be used for the definition of wetlands since that that reference is stricken?
That's one of the questions we've sent to F D P that have not responded with, because there are references to administrative codes that, you know, some we've been able to find and. Strike through and put in the most current F A C or Florida statutes, others not. So that is one that I just in research cannot find, and so that's one of the questions we sent to F D P.
Okay, so that's in progress. Because as well, there are other terms that are used in our comprehensive plan, like development. That I don't see specific definitions. I understand some things are used in their common English sense. But I'll just keep going. So on page ten, objective A one five. Think this has to do with historic sites.
It does. It's five two.
Yeah.
It's A one five two.
Yeah, so is local protection of historic sites allowed under state law? Do you know?
There is, I do not know on how state laws and the state department, the department of state runs that here.
Okay, so if you don't know that's why, because I understand that we, some of these things you will not have an answer to. Okay, and page eleven, policy A one five point five. It says we have four designated historical sites, but I don't actually see them anywhere. I think there's one red dot.
Yeah, that's something that actually, um, so there are, there is a national, at least the data that we have, make the historic designated historic districts and. Register places, which is based upon the natural process and what state. There is one, and then there is a historic district.
Right.
And there does seem to be, at least in the list, when I looked up the, because there's tabular data that comes in that historic district, there does seem to be some structures there. This is, this is not proposed new text, this is text being moved, because what this was, actually, I can tell you what the page was on.
That year, it was further on, we moved it from there.
Yeah, it was under the.
You moved it from there and you put it here.
It was under the future land use districts. The original was on page eighteen, but there's no historic resources in future land use. Historic resources, future land use category. This is just to make it more clear, so we're not taking out text, it's just moving it.
Right, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, when it says that we have four designated historical sites. To make our plan complete, should they be listed?
Well, we can list what is available. On, but then if there's any changes that occur in the future, if you have new properties that show up, or if the historic district expands. Then you have to update that in your comprehensive plan.
Okay, so isn't that what com plans are about?
Yes, and you can, that is something you guys can choose to do, but then anytime there are changes like that, you have to send them to the state.
Okay, so also I'm noticing on page eleven and policy A one seven one. Transportation access, arterial and parking. When the, my own right page.
Policy.
I'm sorry, it's on page twelve. Sorry, page twelve. There's a table there. Access management for streets and highways, U S Department of Transportation, and it's dated June nineteen eighty nine. Is is that the most recent?
That is, I mean, actually, this is one of the the only state, well, there are two state agencies that did get back to us. One was Water Management District, which was a supply plan. F dot did send us, that's why we had some changes after the LKA, you know, that was talked about at the LKA, that was not in our packet. Because F dot did send back some comments. This was not a comment that was perceived on this particular. But we did send this with questions to the Florida Department of Transportation. They did not address this in those question, in the, in the, in the, wasn't official comments, but any. Comments that were unofficial can add in text than previously LKA.
So, because. Or is this something that would be binding when, I mean, I don't understand, if everybody has to update their comprehensive plan. I'm not clear on why D O T is not getting back to you. This is so strange. Because that, June nineteen eighty nine seems really old.
This is one of those questions I can see if they can on this particular one, but this wasn't anything that was given back to us as in the comments before the LKA.
Right, because whatever, I mean, we have this table in here, this is something that we we have to be consistent with, is that correct?
The the com plan has to be consistent, yes, and so if.
What I'm saying is, what, when we approve access points of that kind of thing, do we have to do so with compliance or whatever, then our comprehensive plan and the full table?
This. Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, that's what I want to know. So we need to have the right thing, right?
If I can just interject, though, I I did, I was trying to kind of cue you guys up, because I think we probably will get some comments. So we we did our best to informally reach out to the agencies to ask them. They didn't comment on this, which makes us assume that it's 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 right, and we're not transportation planners. And their formal review, they have a period where they have to review, and it may be short-staffed, they now on their end or whatever. So we may get comments that result in in additional changes, so we do need to be prepared for that, and we're happy to, you know, maybe.
So, well, I'm just gonna rip right along then, because this is, this is very informative, because this is not something that's really been explained to us before. And I think now we're understanding what the process is and the back and forth. So basically, on page fourteen, policy eight one nine two, the land use district. I just wanted some clarification on this. Are land use districts as described here, are they something that we, the city, create and define? Or, so in other words, we can make whatever land use districts we want with our own definitions. We're not constrained by any state statute or set of guidelines for that.
Correct, so this is, this is part of that statutory requirement that allows for, this is the new text that allows for housing. At per commission on these particular land use and zoning districts.
But, well, no, but I'm just asking, my question was even more gentle than that.
They can be customized to the desires of this community. Low density and. Daytona Beach is, you know, goes up to a much higher number than 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 four units per acre.
Okay, that's very helpful to know, because many, many things are prescribed for us, but you're saying we have flexibility, we make our own definition. Excellent, okay. And but it's my understanding, I have not looked at the state law, the state law that is. But then our plan about mobile homes, five five three point three eight two, it looks as if we are required somewhere to allow mobile homes in our city.
Can't prohibit it though.
Pardon?
Can't prohibit it.
Okay, that's one thing, okay. Oh, question.
I'm gonna stop you for a minute, right there before you go forward, just because we're on page fourteen. And if you'll, if anybody was to look at this, you took the acres out, you struck through the acres on all of those.
Yes.
Do you want to explain that?
Because the things can change, and if it's in the comprehensive plan.
It's set.
It's it's set, you have to change it then through the whole state amendment process.
Okay.
And so you don't really need to have that in there itself, because it is changed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Navita?
Oh, yes, on page fifteen. There's a couple of descriptions of land use categories, recreation and public buildings being two of them. They list.
First page.
I'm sorry, I might not be on the right page. Where is, I'm looking for.
No, I think you're on, you're on sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't know what's seen too well, I think I'm right about that. Okay, yes, it's page sixteen, I told you, the categories of recreation and public buildings. There's, they described what these categories are. Right. Oh, wait. They describe what the categories are, and they list some examples, and then they trail off using et cetera. Is that a good practice? Like, at the end of recreation, it says lakes, trail, picnic areas, et cetera. And. There's one other one where I saw, and et cetera. I'm just wondering, is that a good practice to have just et cetera in your com plan?
Not typically.
Okay, that, so you're saying ideally we would do something else, Mark?
Ideally, you would do something else, yeah.
Okay, and so my next question is, does that fall into the technical compliance review? Or would that be a more substantive review that we would do at a later time?
I I don't think the state is going to care that whether there's et cetera or not, and they.
So it's not a technical. Okay.
Can we just say similar or such as?
We're not, we're not doing that now.
I know, but in the future, is that something that if we wanted to go and change?
I mean, obviously, the point of this is they they want to.
By example, okay, okay.
Including but not limited to, I think they said et cetera.
I'm just saying, it just seemed a little unusual to me, or very not, it wasn't very specific.
Well, now, that's not something that you've done, that's something that we have had.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm trying to just look out for you. Go, go ahead, Commissioner.
Sure, no, that was my question. It's number one, is the usual, number two, it's, is it technical, is there a saying, no? Okay, we did acres. Yes, so this. Um, had a question on page nineteen. And there are actually many, many pages I have no questions on. Um, so, don't get too concerned, policy A one eleven two, where is that? Oh, yeah, right in the middle of the page, on nineteen eight one eleven two. Um, you may have a reason for this. Um, there's just this statement that the city shall pursue acquisition lands by state or county governments where regulation will severely limit practical use of real property.
So this, this is the structure of this, this is, this is.
I know, but my question about that is why exactly would we strike through, because we're a small city and we have lots that are affected by wetlands, wellfields, and other regulations? I'm just saying, do we have to take that out, or, um, because it seems to me that we might have such properties?
This is, this is struck through because of property rights elements.
Okay, so in other words, it's, it's not allowed anymore?
It isn't required for this particular, it's just because private copyrights element is that state requirements, these local texts as part of the comprehensive plan for your own local regulations.
Okay, so you're saying we pretty much have to take this out?
You don't have to take this out, you don't have to.
But you also don't need this policy, if you decide you wanna, you know, acquire environmentally sensitive lands to, so they don't get built.
Right.
You don't need a policy in your complant to, to.
Okay, but technically, there's many policies that we don't need in our complant, but it is an optional one that guides. In other words, this could be something that we use as a guidepost, correct?
Could be, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for. Um. Okay. So it could be used as a guidepost, it does not have to come out. But I understand why you did it, I, I totally understand why you did it. Um. The map, I'm talking about the future land use map, the map series, that we just, um, promised to have one thing. And now we do. So, that's good, um. I don't know, the ones I had were not particularly legible. Um, are all of these maps, in addition to the future land use map, considered binding maps?
They're considered statutory required maps for information use to, as part of the comprehensive plan. So they're to illustrate where floodplains are based on state data, or based upon state data, in this case, I'm looking at floodplain map. This is provided from the most recent FEMA flood zones.
Right, but for example, the map that shows wetlands, um, is that binding, or would, for example, um, the water management district be the final words on what's a wetland?
I believe this is water management district, not that.
Well, it depends upon the jurisdiction of the wetlands.
Okay.
But this is not, you know, this is not definitive, it's information.
It's not wet?
It's not definitive, it's informational.
Okay, that's, that's what I was looking for, because they're, they're a little bit fuzzy. Um, but I did notice, and I could be wrong about this, on what, um, the, um, the bicycle and pedestrian routes map. Um, and y'all can see this maybe better than me, but it does not seem to show the current, um, multi-use trail. It just goes, I think it just goes straight up seventeen for the bike route.
Yes.
And when if, if we have a state designated trail that goes off seventeen, should that be reflected?
This was the most, that's due, that was sidewalks and bike lanes that we have to acquire pedestrian and bicycling, but if there is a state trail, I didn't see that.
FDOT just paid for it. Through federal money, did take, if the city paid the bike trail off of constraints.
It probably didn't generate other jets, yeah. Right, we're using, we're using the best available data with GIS to use the, to create these.
So what I'm saying is, if the best available data isn't correct, are we supposed to go with it?
You can, uh, we explain in the background data analysis, um, to edit if we are sure, you know, of the location, so we can draw it, or, um, basically what I would do is, I think GIS work, I would draw that on that based upon guidance here, and then we'd have to explain that in the background data analysis, why there are some differences from FDOT's data.
Right, because I have ten years worth of documents, and I know Commissioner West and Commissioner Banks are very familiar with it. FDOT declared seventeen fiscally constrained, and demanded that we put the bike lanes on one side, the other, one on the multi-use trail, but it was disconstructed and they just taped this. But they determined long ago that bike lanes would not go on seventeen. So, I'm, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure why they're still behind. So, I'm just saying, it's, it's very different than what's.
Yeah, I think it's a different map.
Exactly, it's very, it's very different, um, and as well, um, the answer is probably no, but should it be mentioned anywhere with the transportation element that begins on twenty five? That we are a golf cart community, or are we just covered by that general language?
What page?
Um, well, the transportation element begins on page thirty five. And I don't know where it would go, um, I'm just asking, I don't necessarily expect you to have an answer right now, um, but should it be mentioned anywhere that we're a golf cart community?
But we, when were we established as an official, with history, when were we established, because DOT has to come in and they have to look at the crossings? When were we established as a golf cart, an official golf cart community?
I don't know. I have no idea. I don't believe that we ever were.
I don't think we are.
I don't think we are either.
Um.
When I talk, when I talk to DOT, we have a lot more to do, to actually.
Yeah, to, to be, to actually call ourselves a golf cart community, I looked into that, researched it, and yeah, I can't see where we've done that, and you have to have certain crossings, because especially if they have to cross seventeen, um.
I think you added, of course.
We, we have a whole ordinance.
They will, well, I know, we have an ordinance, but that doesn't make us a golf cart, an official golf cart community. Um, so I think that's something that we probably need to look at, um, before we declare that, to make sure that in fact we are
Okay.
legitimately a golf cart, I mean, yes, we have an ordinance, speaks to golf cart usage, but I don't know that we are a true golf cart community.
Okay.
As defined.
Okay, there we go, that's, so that's a big question mark, let her brought that up, um, hold up, pages forty and forty one. What is this, non-applicable term? We all, it's, it's, oh, okay, uh, forty and forty one, I just was numbering, um, most of that, all that is written, including the bibliography. There you go.
Yes.
Pardon?
Yeah, no, I just want to.
Yeah, forty and forty one.
The non-applicable items are the structural and city bibliography, just it's, it's needed for the comprehensive plan, that's why we recommend.
Okay, so this is surplus. Okay. Um. Okay, moving on. Policy D one two one eight, the adequate water supply. And I don't know what the phase I'm on.
What do you say starts the?
The, what, is that right, start the?
Yeah, you're on, are you on A? Is that what you want, adequate water supply, you're on page forty nine.
Um, so basically, the adequate water supply, is this actually a conferency requirement? That we have to adequate water supply?
My understanding is, that that's part of the planning, that as we go forward, we have to make sure that we have.
You'd be consistently said the, the water supply plan. The state has struck out a lot of the statewide currency requirements, they would not be consistent with that. Most jurisdictions left on at a local level in their plans, so a lot of the currency requirements have come down from state. Have been related.
Okay, so, and that's the reason I'm asking this, and actually, um, we'll make that to page forty two, from how I got this out of order. Back on page forty two, there are two coordinating entities that are mentioned. One is in policy C one one one, it talks about a Putnam County interagency task force on affordable housing. Do we have any idea whether that? And then there's another Putnam County interagency task force on affordable housing. Is that a?
If, if I may, just for information services, the, the regional, um, council has a standing committee on affordable housing, and Putnam County, um, does participate.
Okay, so it's, but I mean, are we supposed to be paying attention to whether that's the right name, is that the correct name for it? Um, so the Putnam County interagency task force on affordable housing.
Well, you guys participated in the ship program, which requires you to have an affordable housing committee, um, I you, you might want to, if you do other updates, you might want to take a look at, at, but you could leave it more generic, should they change their name or whatever? But if you participated in ship, which the, the county does, um, then you do have, yes, we do have a committee.
So you're saying they likely they have an interagency task force on affordable housing?
Well, I'm not sure about interagency task force, but you certainly do have it for, the Putnam County certainly does have an affordable housing committee. So there, there's something, you know.
We do, that, there means, they do, they have one.
Okay, but so do we, and so if names are, if names are unchecked, we, the state doesn't care about that, because it's local?
So basically, what you're asking. Yeah, that, this, this, that, that really is a local matter, um, and so state would, it's, I, I don't imagine it being an issue for clients. Um, but certainly, you want the client to say what, what your plan said, so it needs to.
The name needs to.
Yeah, or you can put it something more generic, just reference.
Okay, but just saying, as far as this review, the technical review for the state, they really don't care if there's what errors about local entity. They're looking at state statutes, the rules, and that kind of thing, correct? Okay, um, so that's very helpful, so I made notes, so that would be for future, so, um, there are references, uh, also, in the section B to the capital improvement schedule. Um. Is that something that's binding on us?
Did you say D?
Like, yeah, like, it's D, yes, D is doc, thank you, D, um, thank you, Commissioner West. Objective D one three refers to our capital treatment schedule, discussed many times. Um, is that something that's binding?
The capital improvements element, or capital improvements plan, when you adopt, does get sent to, uh, the state planning agencies as an appendix to the capital improvements element, but other than that.
Okay, because don't we have currently a capital improvement plan?
I don't think we have a current one.
We don't have a current one?
We're, have a working draft for this budget cycle, I don't think we have one.
Okay, so we don't, don't have a current one, and that's why it's not included.
Yeah, that's why it's not included.
And that's been a concern, I mean, what you're suggesting about, that we don't have a capital improvement plan.
You change your, your, your capital improvement zone, and your complant essentially kind of references what's in the budget document, is the way it's done, because that should be changed every year, at least that year one of the capital group, that should be the one that you guys are working against.
Right, okay, so let me get on here, um, I noticed a couple places where, and if you don't care for this purpose, um, you still have either the old acronym uh, for MIPR with the planning in it, and there's one place where you write up the whole thing, and it's still about planning, but for this technical purposes, or that, that doesn't matter. Because it's not a state issue.
What page, so you can have that reference?
Uh, I can give you, um, I think on page fifty seven, the paragraph in the middle of the page has the old acronym. Final threat. Yes, middle of the page, just got the old acronym.
We can, we can do a search for the plan in there.
Right, and there's, yeah, and there's one, there's one more where it falls well down. Um. Oh, and I just wondered why on that same page, there's a paragraph that's deleted. Um, I guess you're probably gonna tell me a surplus, it talks about, um, requirements for reporting incidents of illegal dumping.
That was referenced to the police department and the law enforcement from the city's perspective, so that, that was because at the LPA meeting, we were told the, the police, about the police department.
Right, but wouldn't we just, the, the whole paragraph is taken out? Not just the reference to the police department, it starts with known incidents, so.
So what we would do in there, if we had then, if it would be, it would probably follow our zoning. Um, not zoning, um, our code enforcement, our code enforcement possibly, um.
I don't know, I just wondered why the whole.
So that some, so that we have some, some, some entity within the city that is reporting these to the federal officials. Is that what you're getting at, Commissioner DeVito?
Well, that's what I'm asking, I'm just asking.
Yeah, so we need to put that, okay, well, we need to make sure that Charles, if don't you feel that code enforcement would be the, who do you feel, who do you want to, or do you want to put city manager, or who, who would you like to reference that to? If somebody's doing illegal dumping and hazardous materials, shall be cited by?
What we've often done is replace, uh, at least for law enforcement. I don't know, that would be helpful in this situation.
All right, I would. So couldn't we just say, I'm sorry, Mayor, can I, so couldn't you just say the city shall, and without designating who in the city, the form of the shall be cited by city, it should be cited by the city, but.
Right, why can it not be the sheriff's office, I mean, it's, it's, it's all the, I think.
Then we could put it as law enforcement.
Especially since it's been specifically contracted with the.
Okay, so add that back in, and just, and rather than the police department, but law enforcement?
Okay.
Or the sheriff's department?
Okay.
I think, um, maybe law enforcement, would you pick on what do you feel?
Yeah, it's like, I guess theoretically.
Okay. Sited by law enforcement.
Okay. Um, all right, then, um, one of my, I guess, one of the well, one of the things I don't understand most, that I'm the most concerned about is, um, the water service element. What is the water supply, sorry, this movie, I'm not gonna get the name right. The whole water supply plan, um. So how exactly binding is that?
That's just sent to the, uh, because it's required by the water management, by state statutes, sort of water management district, to you, basically to make sure, because uh, you have to be compliant with the regional water supply plan, the Northeastern Regional Water Supply Plan, which includes the water management district, we're in St. John's River Water Management District. And so we have to just be reflective of that, so there's information in here, including, uh, what the supply service area is, the public water wells based upon cup permits, the GIS data provided by the water management district. And, um, there's also local knowledge as well, that I, from Charles and his, uh, fellow person on what the capacity is to the local plants. And there's also the demand numbers, and that's that table there, that reflects the actual data within the regional water supply plan, most recently H one seven.
Okay, so, to me, that data seems way off, because, and the, they're saying basically that we're going to have twenty-three net residents in growth over a span of sixteen years. And that just seems, you know, highly unrealistic. We actually had a high population twenty or thirty years ago, somewhere in there.
Seventeen hundreds.
I, I thought it was about eighteen hundreds.
Well, it was very, very close.
It was close to eighteen hundreds, we have a slew of vacant lots. And we have a slew of unoccupied. and we have a slew of unoccupied homes. If those homes were occupied, which, you know, we're undergoing a period of growth all around us, if only the vacant homes were occupied, I think we would have to have more residents, not to mention, Commissioner Banks referred to some properties that are, you know, that are platted for development. So if I'm concerned about our consumptive use permit and these population numbers, is this not the time to deal with it? Should we deal with that in another setting?
Just, just a little clarification, you're required to include a water supply facility work plan if your, if your region is in a water caution area. So for example, we've been working with those plants in Siva County for many years, but only much more recently, Putnam County is now in a water supply caution area. So all the jurisdictions need to do these plans. And it's not referred to, that they use best available data. And the source of best available data, these Bieber projections, it's come up in our other conversations with other communities as well, believe me. They're, they're working on the update to the regional plan right now, and so they're contracted with Bieber to update those numbers. So they will be updated for the next time that we look at the water supply facility work plan. This is really one of those compliance sorts of issues. The state would define it as best available data, it is the best available data that we have, we have anecdotal, I mean, I think we all share your concern, you know exactly what you mean. But it is for the state's purposes, best available data, which is what we see there, and we'll have that in the.
Okay, and we'll review this again in seven years when we have the ability to change those numbers.
But can we review it before seven years? Because I guess, the flux of it, just for the purpose of the whole commission, it says our consumptive use permit is based on a max of nineteen population projection of one thousand nine twenty-seven. I don't know, I mean, it just seems like maybe we should look into what we're allowed, I don't know what percentage of our allowed gallons per year we use, I don't know any of that information.
If I may, the, the, the water management district and the, it is, is going to continue to work with you guys and your utilities in the same way that they always have. So this is kind of a snapshot in time, we work with them on what it says. But then consumptive use permits will be updated as they need to be updated, it doesn't really change anything. It's just a description of, I I think they were trying to heighten the consciousness about water. Which is why they asked to, asked to be put into the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and the reason I raise this for the rest of the commission is, you know, this is a very growing area. We have periods of drought, and I know Commissioner Burton and I both recently lived in southwest Florida, where, you know, water is short. And, you know, you can go from water being plentiful to water being short, and that can, if you don't prepare for it, it can constrain a lot of your activity, so this definitely raised my awareness.
Can I just go backwards for a minute?
Pardon?
Can I just go backwards, moving down the two-point-two water supply agreements? I have a big one, I'm looking at a different language, because I, it's hard to bring them, it's not this thing, but anyway, um, the water supply agreements, I just have a question there, it says Putnam County, the city provides public work, serves some portion of.
On page sixty-two for anybody that.
Thank you, we're unincorporated Putnam County, and right now we are, we don't currently have any of our local agreements. So, it, you know, basically, that's something that, you know, it kind of, I'll try this together, first of all, we are already up to sixteen hundred eight people here in Preston City, and supposedly in two thousand, two thousand thirty-eight months, we're at fifteen hundred seventy-three. But now we are also serving, you know, the unincorporated part of Putnam County, which probably is not included in these numbers as well. Is that something that we are going to put in our, in our local agreement this year? We're going to make sure, because right now it's not there, that, that, I think we're going to, you know, provide water to those areas, are we going to put that as part of our annual?
It's, 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 it's a, a paid-for service, so those are customers for us, and we can, we expand our water system based on them.
And we need to make sure.
Good thing, come when I was talking to a customer, I think, and they, they, you know, stay out there on Union Avenue, and we got some customers out there. And they kind of wanted to get on board, when they were kind of told that the pressure was low, they couldn't. When Union Avenue, so I wondered about it, I go, we go straight down Union Avenue, and I don't think we have side, I have the T supply school.
Isn't there something, I think they put it in between to pump the water as it comes, because the school was not getting the pressure they needed, but isn't there, I don't know what it would be called, but it's in between the pipes, there, a pump station that is helping to push it on out?
I don't know, I'd have to ask.
Because I remember something came up. When it was put in by the architect, it did not quite meet the requirements they needed at, at the high school, so we had to put a pumping station in between to, to push it on out.
So this provision allows us to establish an local.
I could do the pumping station right here, from central to public town.
Commissioner DeVito?
Sure, actually, what Commissioner Burton raised actually was a question I had. The very last, on page fifty-nine, the very last policy about water, D two degrees seven, it actually has mandatory language, the city shall pursue development of an agreement with Putnam County Public Water Service. Why exactly are we making that mandatory and not permissible?
This is just taking policies, because one of the things that water supply land is to, is to summarize, or not summarize, but to quote the exact policies that relate to these, so this is taking policies that are existing within the comp plan, and it's putting the comprehensive plan, and it's just showcasing them to the water management district when they review the water supply. It's existing policies in the comp, complex.
Okay, but it's a new policy, so, but I'm saying, why are we making it mandatory upon ourselves? It says shall.
Is it new, or is it there because you moved it, because you also incorporated it into this? So that's why it's underlined?
Oh, it's.
It's going to be on page fifty-nine.
Yep.
So it's within the, the actual infrastructure.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was looking at water supply land. This is, um, this is required text to reflect the changes to the water, as a water precautionary, Putnam County, to the water cautionary. So these are required policies from the water management.
Okay, so you're saying the water management district requires us, absolutely requires us to enter into the legal.
No, it doesn't require, but it just says, you, it's, it's, it's all aspiration, it's just to have that policy recorded, that you would be, you would look at those documents.
Right, well, just.
Shall is, shall is very direct, so.
Right, to me, shall, if it's to encourage us, I don't understand why we're using shall. I would think it would.
You could just put in language that shall pursue.
That's what it says, shall pursue. I mean, if we have enough of our own customers, and we don't have a consumptive use, I mean, to me, it should be permissible, but if the water management district is making us do this, I'm not, I'm not really understanding.
It's just one of the required policies if you're in a water caution area, and so this is just added to reflect that requirement.
Basically, you're saying we need to do everything that we possibly can do in order to.
That way shall pursue.
Shall pursue, okay, that makes sense to me.
The water man, the water management district is just, is to make sure that there are defined service areas, so that, you know, there are certain areas in state where counties and cities are actually competing, and you have, you know, duplicate line, you know, and of course, that's basically, you know, you're over drying, you know, water, as opposed to there being a clearly defined, this area is mine, this area is yours, we're going to serve it.
Okay.
So that's, that's very interesting, you guys and the county.
Okay, so, I don't really understand, on page sixty-three, about wastewater treatment. Does that make any difference that we have this new biological method of treating our effluent? And this is different from sludge, I guess, is what I'm asking.
This is just what local information was provided. This is something about the water, wastewater treatment plant, capacity, and where the water goes to, that is, that the water management district wants in their comprehensive plan, this is based on information that was provided to me by city staff.
Okay. I'll have to get that to the planet, because we're, we're doing something. Okay, just going down here. Okay, on page eighty-two, policy G two-one-one. It's the coordination of public school facilities element is strict.
It's D. No, if, if I may, I'll take that one, this is one of those, and I know Mark alluded to this before, the statutes have changed over time. The, the school facilities element is no longer a requirement of the state. So in, in most of the jurisdictions we deal with, they've been striking them, not because they're not doing the same level of planning like the school district, but because they don't want to have to change their comprehensive plan every time plans change. So we're just striking it as a kind of, you know, way to.
It's not needed, okay, you can still do it, but it's not needed.
Right, not in mind.
All right. Okay, and then, I assume on page ninety-one, policy H, as a patch four-two-one, there's level of service numbers for the central dentary sewer system. Just wondering, do those figures come from our staff?
That's figures that have not, that were in the comprehensive plan, but we don't have the local knowledge to change those specifically, because that is from staff. But we, we really are focusing on the water, on the water supply plan, and statutes really require, this is local information.
Right, so important, and then again, a similar question to what I had for, for DOT, on page ninety-five, policy H four-two-one thirteen, level of standards for recreation facilities. I'm wondering, it's dated nineteen eighty-nine, is that the most recent standard for recreational facilities, and as well, somewhere in here, it cites the Department of Natural Resources, and that's, doesn't exist anymore, right?
We did strengthen most of those, if we missed one, we'd do that again.
It's on page ninety-five, but I'm saying the table for recreational facilities on page ninety-five cites nineteen eighty-nine data.
It probably cited that Department of Natural Resources, because in nineteen eighty-nine, Department of Natural Resources was the, the agency that did that.
Right, but I'm, I'm saying, is there an updated standard?
I know, but.
I could not, I don't know if it's standard for this, and the Department of Environmental Protection has not responded to the questions that we've had.
Okay.
But if it's not, then you still have to reference Department of Natural Resources, because they were the agency.
Yeah, that's where, that's where that part of the question.
Okay, I want to make sure, thank you. Okay, Commissioner.
Okay, and, yeah, I want to keep going. Oh, on page ninety-six, policy H four-two-sixteen, there's a paragraph there that just, it, it just trails off. It says, policy H two-four-sixteen as outlined in, it's just kind of paint.
I see a sentence.
Management system as outlined in, and then goes into the goal, the goals.
The goal is right under it in the objective.
Okay, so what's the thing is, there's like, okay, there's to be a quote there or something. Okay.
Spacing is just a little off, because it's further down in goal H point five, public school facilities. Grammar check would probably get us on that.
Well, there's somewhere in here, it doesn't space things.
That's because they have justified spacing throughout, so it's going to space, it's going to space crazy sometimes.
We do apologize for spacing, because it was taken from a typed, and so.
That's a point, yeah, that happens, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just pointing out, somehow, something happened, like on page ninety-four, there's just some big gaps that got in there somehow. Right, and I know it's like things you can't see, it's behind, it's behind the, so, no. I think that's pretty much all I had, except, there's a lot of acronyms in here, I'm not sure they're all spelled out. Would it make sense to have like a table of acronyms for easy reference? Because not everybody knows what these things are.
You can have local information in locally, but we wouldn't recommend to have those, def, those acronyms defined as part of your comprehensive plan, because those agencies could change, or something could happen, and then suddenly your plan is out of compliance with that, because those lists aren't.
Well, no, I'm really talking about, I think they're state agencies, there's just a lot of acronyms up here.
State agencies. You never know who's in leadership, what they're going to do.
Right, but I'm saying, it doesn't matter.
Community affairs, no longer.
Right, but it doesn't matter, what I'm saying is, if you just say DCA, people may not know what that is. To me, it should either be spelled out, or there should be a list on the map, and I'm, I'm not talking about the local ones, I'm talking about the state and regional level, there's just a lot of acronyms, I can make a list, if that would be helpful. Then, just, just in general, you said you're waiting to hear from that from some agencies. Just, I'm really not sure, some, some terms are defined as a statute, but some terms are just kind of definition for, but I guess we'll see what the agency responds to your question. Okay, that, that's all I have.
Again, commissioners, we have any further questions? Commissioner Burton? Commissioner White? Commissioner Laas?
I'm good.
Hey, Commissioner DeVito?
I have my comment about this process, although it was well-intended, and I think it, I can see how it makes sense from the planner's point of view. In retrospect, looking back, looking back at the confusion that came from planning and building meetings, and the amount of time that it's taken to figure out what we're doing in some cases. In hindsight, I think it would have worked better if, instead of having in that fall meeting where we talked about aspirations and how people reviewed the, viewed the future of the community, I think that kind of what we did today would have been something that would have been very helpful, both for the commissioners and for the general public, to just go over what a comprehensive plan is, or what future lands we set. And I know that it seems right, but actually, I think people are interested, and it would have helped, I think it would have been more orient to what we were doing at hand, I think it turned out to be confusing to jump ahead first. And the other thing that I would like to suggest to Charles and to the whole commission, generally, people that have a presentation to make to us about statutes, or a PowerPoint, or whatever, I think we would all benefit if that material would be provided in a memo and writing ahead of time. And this is not just super, this is very typical, any kind of a report, it's usually just made verbally. So that means we have to absorb it at the meeting. And I, I just think that it would be more helpful, and then it would be on the record, if we got more information upfront. if we got more information upfront in writing. And then it would be on the packet and people, members of the public would have it right there. Um, I think
Thank you. Um, and, and quite frankly, I think we've come a long ways as far as providing a lot of information and data to everyone, so as we go forward, we'll just continue to improve, help that. At this time, I'd like to open a public comment. So if we have anybody from the audience that would like to speak, please file me forward. Mr. Miller?
Steve.
Steve MC three thirty-five. Just to pick up that um, Skip Miller owns thirty-seven acres. It's in Orange. If I were a developer, I bought that from Skip. And I decided to put in seventy-four homes on half acre lots. Would that not be in, that's not in compliance with this. Would they be forced to deny?
Say it one more time.
So, so like
So he has residential medium density.
The power, that's all I'm asking.
You, you can't, for example, if, if somebody proposes a development for a higher density than is allowed on that map, you can't
Wait, which, which
What I'm talking about is lower.
But
There's thirty-seven acres, Skip owns thirty-seven acres. If I went and I bought it, and I said, I would like to give people elbow seventy-four homes on half acre lots. Would they be forced to deny?
It's currently single family up to four units now, and the future land use is up to ten units, is that correct?
Apparently.
Yeah. Yeah, the future land use is up to ten units an acre. I believe it's currently SR one. I think it's a four units currently. So his question is he wants, I'm trying to do the math, was that more dense than ten years to make it?
Well, I would be, that would be two houses, oh, you're, two houses per acre. Okay, this is not medium density.
So he'd have to apply for
Yeah, I would tell him that he would have to go through a comp plan amendment to go low density in order to, you know, that's what he wanted to do.
All right. So this would not force their hand, they would not.
No, he, he'd be allowed. This is consistent with
Typically, if, if you have something that has a lower range, the way most community, like if it's four to ten, and somebody only wants to do two. Typically, most communities would say that's a future land use map. Um, and the future land use map, and you're good to go. If that's truly what you wanted it.
So it would just be amended.
It would be amended now.
To a lower density.
Depending on how, how large is the property?
Where is that?
So that would be a small scale amendment that could be done at a local level without having to transmit to the state, so they would that is something that could be done, and that would be at a, you know, that would be a legislative type expert.
And when he says legislative, he means, he doesn't mean the legislature.
What I mean, when I say legislative
I just want to make sure that
Can I say legislative, or I mean, that is
A policy, a policy.
You don't have to give a, when you're making a legislative decision,
Yeah.
you don't have to give a reason. You, if you're doing a legis, if, if, if you as a town council are doing a legislative act, you can deny it because you for any reason that you care to state or not state. That's a legislative act. You're, you're making law. If you're doing something that is quasi judicial, that's not the case. You, you have to, you have to state the reason and it has to be supported by substantial competent evidence.
Did that answer your question, Mr. James? Okay, okay. Mr. Miller? And, and I apologize, I didn't earlier take public comment, but it's just if I open it up for one, I understand I have to open it up for the entire audience, so. In fairness, so thank you. I wasn't picking on you. I didn't want you to think I was picking on you.
Uh, it would be helpful. I think you mentioned a legislative change in twenty nineteen about property rights.
Uh, it was actually last year.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
If you could post that on the city website. So we can see exactly whose property others, because the information is currently on the website. There's a lot of protected lines here, policies that take away, uh, property rights, property other rights. And, uh, and this gentleman made a good comment that, uh, you know, the comprehensive plan should be, you know, a future comprehensive plan should be, you know, uh um, kind of wishes of the community, but I think even more important, there should be some, uh wishes of the property owner. So we don't have to get into kind of legal situation in the future. So, uh, changes, proposed changes, I don't know, it's just proposed, are pretty sweet for what currently right now.
But, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
And the projected, uh, growth.
You said there's a whole change.
Well, I don't know, since it's what, population has been decreasing, but you know, a lot of people getting out of the city, that's for sure. You come into the road there. But, uh, as far as guidance on, uh, what is and what isn't, uh, wetlands, we're on the jurisdiction of St. John's Warren match, and they have, uh, pretty good business that they can give a definition for it. Because we're rather than
You're actually in the jurisdiction of three different agencies that are regards to weapons. St. John's, DNP, and the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, they all
And their definitions of weapons vary slightly.
Some people would call that kind of government overreach, that's a different We're all living, living through that, that's for sure. But, uh, that, that would help, whatever changes were recently or legislative, that they may answer a lot of questions about everything that's redacted uh, and what was on the website, the website. I answered a few questions. Uh, I hope before things are adopted, everything that was proposed, that possibly we have another workshop. But I think, uh, this is, you know, made a good comment, you know, the, uh, guidance. You know, I, I didn't have time to look up Florida statute, the guidance that, you know, proposed. And, uh, I met this, there was a act, a regulation act in the area. I had a chance to put that up, but that would be very good, because I'm sure it's up in the Florida statute, the guidance process. Which is probably constantly changing to go to Florida. But I look forward to maybe seeing the proposal, the new legislative changes on probably.
Thank you very much. We appreciate, we appreciate your time here today. So I'm going back, commissioners, I'm going to, don't see any other public speakers. I'm going to close the public comment at this time. I'm gonna bring it back. Do we have any, any other comments? Is everybody satisfied?
Yes, sir.
I have one question.
Imagine, go ahead.
This is very important. Um, so, you know, there, it seems that we're not really driving our own train and making our own decisions as a commission. Um, as far as the next step goes, Charles told me that this comprehensive plan, he was planning to put it on the agenda for first reading next week.
Yes.
Okay, but uh, just as it is today.
Well, the few, it made some changes, I know it's, I know it's changes. Still get a new version of it.
We will get a new version.
Okay, and so when will that be available to the public?
I'll be getting that to you tomorrow, because I can make those changes and then they
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Right, because I don't know, I mean, to me, I'm, I'm not sure that enough people really understand what this is all about. We're now under a time constraint. Not sure how, you know, I wish that we had understood in the fall what the time constraints were. I think it would have been highly appropriate to have given us a schedule um, that we were going to be required to follow. This, I heard that there was a letter from the state that we received. It was never distributed to the commission. So I'm finding it somewhat, um, disquieting that was five months ago.
Okay, okay, Commissioner DeVito, I mean, we went through a lot of changes, okay, I, I know, but I, I don't want us to beat up on staff. I know that I'm done. And so we have a motion to adjourn. Now, I want to say that we're beating up on staff about this, and we had a lot of changes.
You mean our staff?
Yeah, I feel like you're beating up on our staff.
Our staff wasn't here when this was initiated, this
The, the problem of this, your, your prime will still not
And we can't go back and change it. And so we'll just debate it, and we'll debate it, and we'll debate it, and we can't go back and change it.
Well, then I'll, I'll shorten that and make my
Okay, please.
Number one, I am not beating up on our staff. Or we're in a, when this was brought to us, we were in a state of transition. And Charles came in, in the middle of it all. But number two, to me, I have never, this is not a matter of crying out loud. I think it's very important for the commission that we exercise our responsibilities as a commission, that we know what schedules we're committing ourselves to. And really speaking on behalf of all the public in Crescent City as well as us. I think that it's concerning that we're just now getting into the meat of what this is really all about and understanding it. And I agree, we can't unring the bell. Um, but I want to be sure that we understand what we're doing. We're moving ahead, we're gonna take this to first reading. Um, I still have questions about what we're gonna be required to do after we pass this.
Okay, well then, okay, well, let's finish that up, since we are still, we still, I still have a pending motion. Would you, would you come through and just walk us through that, please? The next step. If you did earlier, you told us what would happen earlier. But if you'll just walk us through it again about it has to go to the state, the state has to review it, they have to, so you'll just
So, um, you, you transmit, that's the word they use. Um, and that would be probably the first reading.
Exactly, first reading.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and so you're not, you're not adopting the changes. You're, you're transmitting the change through the state process for your, your basement, um, excuse me, amendments. Um, and the state reviewing agencies comment, and I, I caution you, you probably will have some comments. Um, so there'll be some work at the other end. Um, it comes back, there's a timeframe during which they need to make the comments. They make the comments, um, we then have, I believe, a hundred and eighty days to, um, to adopt. So we need to respond to their comments, um, and, and address them in the comprehensive plan. And then you have a second reading or adoption, which would actually change the plan. And then you provide it to the state, and the state will check the box that says compliance.
And then we start all over again. I start in the time plot, so I just
So we've got a lot of time to make changes and corrections and
Yeah, the, the, the changes that, that, um, you've been talking about that may have to do with, um, changes to what you like to see in the plan. Um, those are text amendments, but they go through a, a abbreviated process, the P L X five state review. Um, and then changes to the map, as, as Mark alluded to, if it's less than fifty acres, you make them locally separate projects to state.
That's a little bit So that, I think the thing to do, i- if you're talking about elements proportionally confident that just don't fit your vision for the future of Crescent City. Once we've gone through and taken care of this appliance issue, I, I think you go back through your comp plan slowly, deliberately, piece by piece. You don't have to look at it all at once. You can uh, you know, bite it off into smaller portions and make sure it's, you know, reflective of your vision and desires for the future.
Thank you, Mark. But is that satisfy you?
Have one more question, but I think I can get it answered offline and just
No.
No, I, I don't need it answered now, so that's good for me.
So, Commissioner, are we satisfied with, at this point in time, knowing what we've got in front of us? Are we satisfied with taking this at first reading next Thursday?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we comfortable with that?
Yes.
Um, and, and you're gonna have those changes, so we'll have those by, hopefully by tomorrow. Okay. Okay. With that, we've got a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.